We'll convene the regular meeting of the Eastline Board of Selectment for Wednesday, March 1st, and we've already done the pledge of allegiance prior to the special. We'll go to that. No additional agenda or consent calendar items. Any delegations? Anyone wish to speak to the board?
You can.
Okay. Saying none. Approval of minutes. We have a few. Special budget meeting of February 13th, 2023.
Move to approve the special budget meeting minutes of February 13th, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions carried unanimously. The next one?
Move to approve the special budget meeting minutes of February 15th, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions carried unanimously. And moving on, regular meeting of February 15th, 2023.
Move to approve the regular meeting minutes of February 15th, 2023.
Second?
Second.
Is there a second? Okay. Any comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions carried unanimously. Moving on, the consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar in the amount of $88,732.75.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify.
Wait a minute. I have...
What?
No, I have $25,343.63.
That's what I see too. I'm sorry. I was looking at something else.
Okay. So I have...
I'm looking at 88,732.
Hang on. Hang on.
Well, this is tax refunds for consent calendar made of March 1st.
Yes, yes. Come on in.
February 15th.
Yeah. Let me just use that.
I have 88,000 too.
This is February 15th. This is not February 15th.
Just withdraw that motion?
Yes.
Oh, no, no.
It wasn't seconded.
Oh, yeah. It wasn't seconded, so we'll just correct it.
Okay.
I have 88,000.
But it's this February 15th.
Oh. Yes, so that was attached to those minutes, I think.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
That's okay. No worries. Okay. Move to approve the consent calendar for the regular meeting of March 1st, 2023 in the amount of $25,343.63.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions carried unanimously. Moving on, our fire marshal is here too. Last meeting, we had indicated, you know, his desire to have some permits and some fees and so forth. So he's coming in. If there are no questions, what we'll do is we're going to submit it to the town attorney for review so we can come back for an ordinance and so on. So Bill, if you'd like to come out and just give us a quick... Hey, Bill, could you really quick, since we've got you up here now? The tri-band radios, there were some questions on those. Explain those.
We are the only department that doesn't have any tri-band radios, and with the entire system moving over to the, what looks like to be the state band, we would have no ability to be able to communicate. So that, we just don't have them, so...
Okay. That's what I thought. So we're all set there. So, okay. Okay. Any questions for him on that? Because we can ask that because it's a special meeting. So, none? Okay. Go ahead with your fees.
Well, good evening. I offered to come back, and as you know, during my budget prep presentation, I kind of teed up the, kind of, the discussion for this. I know Eric Quinn came last meeting and did the presentation and kind of hopefully answered some of the questions. I did watch the meeting online, and there were a couple of things that I would like to have add. I know there was a question, there was a discussion about pros and cons, and in complete transparency, one of the cons, this is a change, and I think that needs to be right up front. You know, the town has never done this. However, this is an industry standard that's been accepted and adopted in municipalities throughout the area, and I do have a list in case anybody needs, you know, or needs to hear that. Contractors in general are surprised that we don't charge for plan reviews and inspections because, again, it is, it is, it is an industry standard. The adoption of this or the rejection of this, and I do want to clarify, I appreciate all the support with the, with the comments regarding the need for life safety inspections and so forth. Whether this is adopted or not, we still are obligated to do those inspections. But if this doesn't pass, it doesn't absolve us from going out and doing all the plan reviews and all the inspections. We currently have between 700 and 800 inspectable properties within the town that we are required by state statute to either do a annual, biannual, or every three-year inspection on, and we are falling considerably short on that because, again, we don't have, you know, the staffing, being a one-man show to go out and do all that. I'll give you a kind of an example. There were a couple of large construction projects that were undertaken in the town when I was appointed back in May of last year, 185 Main Street. Now, when that whole project was submitted, there was a, an application for a building permit, and as part of that, there was a fee associated with that. Now, maybe, maybe people know, or maybe they don't know, but when there's a project of that size, there's a, there's a parallel lane that, with the Fire Marshal's office, where we are responsible to do plan reviews as well. We're looking for life safety, fire safety, fire protection, and we don't get compensated for that, unlike the building department. After the plan review is done, it doesn't stop there. A project such as 185 Main, we're looking at a mixed occupancy. You have residential, you have commercial. It's a process requiring both the building department and myself to continually go in during the whole process of signing off on various sections of that. So that portion of this fee structure and getting some revenue that would be generated for a permit for the plan review would to subsidize some of the man-hours over the course of six, seven, eight months because when you're doing that, you're not doing other things. Same thing with 170 Flanders Road where they had to fire. There was, there was a lot of, a lot of man-hours that's kind of, I don't want to say you're kind of overseeing, but you're overseeing the project as you move along. I looked, I took, when I saw that the town of Eastline was not doing this, this whole structure, this fee structure or the charging of fees, I kind of looked at it that it was a missed opportunity for revenue, especially since I came in with a budget, looking to increase my budget by adding staffing. So that was the whole purpose behind this. I wanted to at least give you what I thought would have been the con. The other con to it is that we don't, and we miss out on potential revenue. So I thought, I do want to thank Eric Quinn for coming in. I thought he did a fine, a fine job. Hopefully, he answered your questions. If there's any other questions, please let me know, and I'll do my best to answer them for you.
And here again, too, with the, with the revenue generation, that money would be used for the Fire Marshal's office. It wouldn't be, you know, to supplement all the parts of the, you know, the top budget year, oh, let's use the Fire Marshal's fees to help with that. This would be allowing him to add the staffing to do what, in a lot of cases, he's statute required to do. So questions for Ann?
Yeah, so these fees, would they be charged then? I'm just looking at this. Is it every annually you would charge it? Like if something is built over, you know, say, two years, then would you charge the fee each year?
There's, the short answer is yes and no. And I'll, and I'll give you, and I'll give you an example. When you, when there's a building permit, where there's a permit for new construction or remodel or something, that's a one-time fee. So that, that's not something that, like, 185 Main Street is not required to pay that every year. If you get an inspectable property, and we're getting, what we're getting now are the properties that are calling us because they need their liquor permits, they need their, they need certain things for them to continue in their operation. So take a restaurant that has a liquor permit. That's an annual. So we go in there, like I did one, we've done two, three today that are strictly relating to their liquor permit. That's an annual thing. We're going to do that annual inspection whether they're paying for that or not.
So right now, you don't charge for that?
We don't charge for that. So like...
But under this, then you would be able to?
We would be able to charge. And again, and it's strictly by, by classification of the assembly, whether it's like you have educational, which, and again, I think it was, it was built in that, you know, the town's educational buildings would be exempt from this, but we have to go into the educationals every, every year. Certain, certain commercial, commercial properties were required to go into every year. So, and, and the dollars and cents are based upon square footage. Now, the dollars and cents that was submitted is the recommendation and the guidance of the state Fire Marshal. It's the same fee structure that has been adopted and looking to be adopted by, by the area. So it's not like, it's not, it wasn't some arbitrary number. Those are the numbers that were basically told to us. If you're going to do this, this is what you should be charging. But the short answer to your question is, if it's, if it's an annual or a biannual, based on classification, it would be every year.
Okay. And does this, do these fees apply to both residential and commercial?
Residential of three family or better. So like if you have a two-family residence, would not be, we don't inspect those.
Okay.
We don't, so we have no authority to go in there and do by, by, under the life safety code. So any three family or more.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Bill?
So the, the question I asked was about charities, 501Cs, churches, synagogue, et cetera. There's no waiver in here for those. There's no, is there a possibility that we can add one?
Absolutely. I mean, and again, I took the, what was, it wasn't in the previous, it wasn't in the recommended, you know, verbiage or the language. If that's, if that's the decision of the town to proceed, by all means, we certainly could do that.
Do you spend a lot of time in those areas?
I don't think, we have, we have, we have a number of them. I don't think there's, not a national, you know, there's probably a handful of them, but it's not something that we, that we go out regularly to do.
No, I, I mean, I support what you're doing here. I mean, it makes sense, and it's, it's common that most towns do it. I don't know how much you're going to spend inspecting our airport and hangars. I didn't notice that was in here, but...
Right. And again, but then again, that is, that is part of, that's part of what the state, is part of the state regulation. So, you know, what if somebody were to open up a private judgment court somewhere, and we would have the authority to do that inspection? We would be required to do that inspection, and the same statute would give us the ability to charge for that.
Okay.
So buildings such as churches, or if we had any hospital buildings or anything, then you would still inspect them, but we would waive the fee?
Well, we could, absolutely. Now, we have Hartford Healthcare down in Flanders Four. I just recently did that inspection. That's considered under, under the hospital guidelines. So we, we could charge them if we adopted this, or if, again, if the, if the town opted not to, then we, we wouldn't, but we still would be doing the inspections.
Yeah, I mean...
So we do have them.
That's what it says under section five, is that you're still doing the inspections. You're just not charging the towns and schools.
We're just not charging them.
Yeah, we could, you know, if we decide to, we want to pursue this, we could ask town attorney to obviously enter language for, you know, 501Cs.
Right.
You know, recognize religious, you know, buildings. I'm sure we could do that.
I think we should, considering the potential of more multi-family dwellings in town. It takes a lot of time for somebody who's coming in with an application for a development that has 60, 60 homes in it, 60 buildings.
Well, I'm just thinking, too, the development going up on Bridebrook Road, I'm sure you're going to spend a lot of time there.
We're going to spend an awful lot of time there.
Yeah, and here again, you know, and...
And that's just during the construction phase. That's going to become an annual inspection, depending if, if it goes through as condominiums or apartments, we're going to be required to go into every one of those units every year.
Every individual apartment?
Every individual apartment, to ensure for smoke detectors and proper regress.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Bill, thank you for being so very thorough, and we'll make sure we, I don't think we need a motion. I'll just ask the town attorney to craft the ordinance. At that point in time, we can take a look at that later on, so...
Thank you.
I do have just one other question. So in our handout, it's estimated construction cost from the building permit application.
Correct.
But the building department is already charging?
Correct. And we would charge a percentage based on their fee.
And so what we have in front of us is a sample.
Well, actually, what you have, that would be the language. I think it's 65, 65 or 85. I don't have it, I don't have it actually in front of me. It's a percentage, and again, that's based on, that's based on the language that was provided to us by the state. So like, you know, if you, if the building department was charging $100 for easy round numbers, and it was 85%, we would also charge $85. So the total application fee for ABC Construction would be $185 as opposed to $100.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
The building inspector told me he could be available tonight. I told him, moving on, because I think that's the next item, too. It'd be the same thing. He just wants to update his schedules to more current because right now, we are well below the lowest other town in the area to, for, like that, too. And I think Dave did a really good job of explaining it, too. So if, you know, there's any questions you'd like me to relay back to him, I definitely will for correction to this, but if not, I can forward this to, to the town attorney as well. So any, any comments on this one?
No, if there's no action, and it's going to come back to us.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Kev, can I make a quick comment?
Yes, sir.
I just want to, clarification. Originally, when we put this on there, I said building and zoning permits. I talked to Bill Maholland. This, he's not included in here. So just if we're going to pull this one more month, we can just take away the zoning portion of that.
Okay. Yeah, we'll take that part out.
Okay. Just clarification.
So we're happy with the zoning? He doesn't want to do any adjustments?
He... I don't know how the zoning fees work.
Yeah, he, I asked him, and he just, if he wanted input, he didn't seem to, he seemed to be pretty comfortable with it, so. Okay. Okay. And as I mentioned at the beginning of the, the meeting, the EV charging station, Alex Close, our town engineer, who is going to present this, is on unexpectedly, not for a long period of time here now, though, on military duty. So we spoke, Sandy took a call from the contracting company. I spoke with the gentleman as well, and they're perfectly comfortable with holding off two weeks until he comes back, so we'll do that there, so. And then moving on, for continued old business right now, we can get right back into discussing our, our budget for, you know, now we'll actually get back to seeing what adjustments we'd like to make. And I think last year, we started with the, you know, section one, you know, basically went through all the sections one at a time and went through there.
Are we in revenue, Kev? We're in revenue? Uh, expenses, sorry?
Yeah, we're going over, basically get a start on budget, so the 101.
Okay.
So if we decide to implement these fees, then do we anticipate income? Should that estimation include it?
It is, it's already in our budget right now, based on the estimates.
Okay. I, I must have looked at it and thought it meant building instead of...
Oh, no. It gets into revenues, too. But, you know, here again, when we get to, get to, like, building 104, we have the net budget, and then, you know, we do have a revenue account we could put in there, too, to indicate that is moving forward, too. So, okay, with section 101, any changes there? Again, I have moved, or we have moved 7.5% or...
Yep. 8,297.
8,200, 8,200 from the first selectmen's salary line item, and moved that over to water and sewer because, especially now with things going on, I'm spending a lot of time dealing with, at least three or four hours a week dealing with water and sewer issues, so that was it.
Okay, so then, I'm sorry, what would the total be for the first selectmen?
Well, that's one, that's a 102, 333, but, and then...
So the totals, the total, Kev?
Yeah.
So this year, it was 107, 669. Next year, with the 2.75 GWI for all non-affiliateds, 110, 630. General fund, 102,333. Water and sewer are paying 8,300, 8,297, just to be...
Okay.
Yeah.
For $3. Okay.
80, 82...
8,297. And it's already, that first gray column, it's already in there.
I don't, I don't see it because I'm seeing just the 102.
She's in the big budget book.
Oh, um, oh, no, you want us to go to the other...
Go to the budget papers I gave you today. If you want to use it as a reference, but I would really use those, the pink copies today. That's the latest and greatest, hot off the press.
Yeah. You have a couple of pages that you put in there.
I got an extra copy here if anyone needs one.
So it's your, it's your operating summary?
Yeah, operating summary that he handed out tonight.
This is...
The budget summary?
Correct.
No, what's it called?
Yeah, that's the right one.
Okay. We need to definitely make these much bigger next time.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry if they're a little small, guys.
All right. What?
Big papers expensive.
All right. That's fine. Okay, I got it.
Anything else in 101?
He's, so executive assistant, is that new?
No, that's Sandy.
Oh, so good.
Been here the old time.
Yeah. Nope, that's that. And everything else, longevity, Sandy's got that. The ad hoc, we're going to leave that as it is, and pretty much everything else stays status.
So the part-time clerical is to cover for Sandy's vacation time?
To be honest with you, no. We've been getting, last week, you know, we, next, last week, a couple weeks ago, it's a quiet time at Parks and Rec. Jerry Locke can let us borrow Arlene for the week, so, you know, that would be, you know, we've used that for probably a little bit of other things, but, you know, that wouldn't even be, that would be about three days' worth of, of coverage, so not really.
Well, that's why I was wondering if we might want to consider increasing that.
I think, I think we've worked out a better way to handle that now without having to increase. This year especially, I just, you know, really don't want to do that. I think we've worked out something to where we can have somebody in there for the vast majority of the time. You know, if it's a sick day that comes up out of nowhere, you know, that, you know, not much we can do about that, but, you know, we plan time off. We've pretty much got that taken care of now.
So would this line cover for what we were talking about previously, about a floater?
No.
Okay.
I mean, here again, that floater, I mean, in a matter of three days, you've used up your floater.
Yeah. Okay.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
We're earning postage. It was $20,000. It says we have large mailings for the tax department. Is there a decrease due to them using the third-party vendor in the postage?
No.
No? Okay.
No. Okay. Moving on to the assessor's office. One of the changes you'll see in that, and I think we covered, there's one line that went up a bit, 20, the professional conferences and so forth like that. We actually get a break on that because we have more need to have them go to classes, but because Diane is an instructor there, we get a little bit of a break on the professional conventions and conferences and so forth like that.
So Kevin, the, under contracted operating services, that reduction of 2,500, that's your suggested, that was your suggested reduction?
What was it?
Uh, let's see. It's, it would be 239.
Okay. I was looking at the budget book. I apologize. I'm still...
That's okay. I know we have two.
Yeah, we got two tied in there. Okay. Yes, that was mine. The contracted operating services.
So I know what that is, Kev, if you want me to talk about it.
Yeah, I do, too. Yes.
So every year before COVID, there was money in the budget for personal property and special property audits, so, and inspections. So, you know, Costco, some, some other commercial entities in town, we would contract a vendor to do an audit to make sure all the personal property is accounted for, and so she has a note here, the return on investment there is 340% over the last couple of years. So when she was, so that, that, that $5,000 hopefully will turn in about 15. So, you know, it's got a very good return on its investment, and that's each year. So, you know, every year that, you know, they collect more, they find more personal property, the years after that, not just that first year, but, you know, after that, you know, we're getting all that money. So it's, it's money well spent. But there was a couple of years, I think two or three, we had like a moratorium on that account, and her thought was, you know, these people are suffering from COVID, and businesses are going through enough, so, and now, you know, we're kind of transitioning out of COVID, so this will be after the, you know, emergency declaration is done, so she's ready to go back after them.
Okay.
Okay.
I remember when we put that in place.
Yep.
It was a good, good thing.
Yep.
Okay. Tax collector, that's only up, make sure we look at all the right ones here for the group.
366.
Any questions or adjustments on that? Here again, you know, there's a, you see the 150% jump, and, but that's longevity because Sarah now qualifies for longevity. The $100 previously was for John McCullough, because if you're an elected official, the only longevity you get is $100. And, but now Sarah's qualified for longevity at 250. And the professional conference and going up from 1,500, 1,540 to 2, 2,840 because both Chris and Denise, who was hired about a year ago, have to attend, you know, training and be taking some more steps towards full certification.
So jumping ahead to the end, are we going to just forward to the Board of Finance, a one sentence saying the total budget of all the budgets that were filed, or are we going to vote on each one of these budgets individually?
Well, I, I thought, if we're going to make an adjustment, I would, we'd vote on it, so we would just vote on making the adjustment as we go along, and then the bottom line is what we'll put in that. We're not going to put all the details, just going to put in the bottom line, and then they'll get updated budget documents.
Yeah, I have the, Sandy and I, Sandy worked...
Right, yeah. And Ann's got the, yeah, we have that. We have that here.
I'll get the numbers in there once we're done.
Okay. Anything else under tax collector? Same thing with building. Same thing with building, buildings up 6.9%.
Six point, where'd you get that, Kev?
That shows over here, and, no, I'm sorry, you have, well, do you have the, okay, never mind.
Minus 1.19.
Yeah, minus 1.19, yep, I keep looking at the wrong book, and, you know, all habits are hard to break.
Just to clarify, from, from Roseanne's question previously, so, there's the column of for selection and adjustment, so we don't need to vote on each one of those things as we're going along, if we're, are we trying to take a consensus?
Well, no, unless you, I mean, those are just, that were made prior to the, it being brought here. If you want to adjust it up or down, then it would require a motion to do that.
So we're using this as the most recent document?
Okay, okay, yeah, if it's down, we're, I think we're good with that.
Yes, absolutely.
Town engineer? Okay. Again, not much there. Human resources, the only real increase there, and it was cut down a little bit, was for the part-time clerical, which now actually, you know, we see that for Dina because that's an increase in hours because she's now basically 29 hours a week, as opposed to that.
Is that still part-time then?
Yes, it's still part-time.
Okay.
And outside of salary, everything else holds the same, except for a little bit, and dues and professional organizations, that's going up to $50, so. Town clerk, you can see we have that there, any questions there? The only real jump thing that would jump out at you is a little bit more in longevity, but that's 40% in that, and that's not for Karen, that's for Brooke, and the $1,000 extra in printing and dog's license and, and dog licensing.
That's just what it says, it's printing.
Yeah.
Vallets and all the paper stuff.
Yeah, and ballots is what it says.
Correct.
Health is, is 1.09%, but that's for ledge light, not much we can do for that.
Those figures are based on town populations, right?
Correct.
Yes. Right.
1% is not bad.
Yeah, no. Information technology, we see that there, and, you know, it's a net is, here again, I think he, Dan did a really good job pointing out that, you know, we've reduced the need for contracted services, which I think is really good, and that, you know, just a very modest overall increase to the budget for, for IT.
So I have a quick question on that.
Sure.
The team is Carmen Ames and then Dan, right?
And Dan.
So they were both recently hired?
Oh, Carmen's been here for a long, long time.
Oh, is that where longevity comes into it?
Oh, yeah, Carmen's been here.
28 years, I think?
Oh, not 28 years, but she's been here, she's been here as long as, as, prior to me coming on the board of selection.
At least 20 years.
Oh, okay, that's all right, because I was like, I thought they, okay, got it. I thought she was new.
Yeah.
She was here, she was hired in the early days of computers.
Okay.
When some of us were still using typewriters.
Okay. Registitors, what, you'll see, I didn't do this, but I'm recommending it tonight, and I have talked to the, to the registrars about this as well, and they're comfortable with it, under election day expenses, which is item, you know, 110, 500, 401, right now that's at 22.7, they are perfectly, well, from that, we would take $3,000 out of that, which would be the laptops that are in their budget, we have enough resources, we talked to Carmen, we'll be able to provide them with laptops out of this year's budget, so we can remove that $3,000 from that line item and make it 19.7.
This is a permanent transfer to that department?
No, it's not a transfer to that department at all, these were, from this year's funds, we're buying them laptops, so we don't need to have to put budget for the $3,000.
Is there going to be any added cost for the charter revisions going into this election cycle?
Yes, the, just, the only thing that will be for is for ballot printing, because it'll be held on a normal election day, so that's the only thing, the ballot printing. But here again, if you get the question on it, it won't, that'll be negative, but we'll be able to handle that.
Extra labor for tallying and all that stuff.
No, I mean, it'll be, as you feed it in, it'll just print out when the results of the election print out, so will that, we'll get very little cost of that.
Just one other question, early voting, they said it was dictated by the Secretary of State, we don't know.
We have no idea, and Senator Marks and Representative Houston have said that the state is going to provide the funding for, for that, so.
Oh, okay, oh, good, all right.
Because there's talk of anywhere from, from eight day, or four days to 10 days, it's, it's, it's up in the air right now.
Well, that's why I was concerned, I was like, I don't see anything, I realized it was the state, okay.
And the same thing with 38, with item, with line number 500, 402, referendum election day expenses, they were perfectly comfortable reducing that from 38, 775 to 38, 275, so a total of $3,500 reduction, but this is something we would have to, we would have to, this is something we'd have to vote on, because this would be a board of selection adjustment, and as I said, I have talked with them about it. Yeah, it would be, okay, a motion to reduce.
We'll move to reduce in the registrar's budget, 110, election day expenses by $3,000 to total 19,700, and we can also, the same motion, same, same department, referendum primary expenses, reduction of $500 coming to the number of 38,275.
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a, moved and seconded, any other comments?
In your discussion about the laptops have already been removed.
Yes, the laptop, yeah, that, in the, in the 3,000, so, okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, carries unanimously. Judge of probate, and this is separate from what we voted on before, this is, you know, the figure, the figure they, they give us for what our percentage of the four towns is.
Yeah.
So we don't need, okay. Maintenance of town buildings, we had that discussion when they came up, and, you know, Parks and Rec and Library felt that since it's a building, we should move that money into, into our line, the building line, which, you know, it's moving the same money to another pot, but as Joe pointed out, you know, it's a lot of money, so I talked to Joe, I have talked to Jerry Locken because it used to come out of his budget, so I told him what the, and I, and I talked, to reduce that by 9,000 to, as you can see right there, to $12,000, this would, right now it allows for eight hours of coverage on Saturday and four hours of coverage on Sunday, what this will do is provide, if you broke it down to hours, the 12,000 would be six hours on, on Saturday and four hours on Sunday, because I told him if we were going to have to assume it, there might have to be some changes into the amount there, so it still provides the coverage because the library is open on Sunday from 12 to 4 most of the year, and the years, and the days it wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't have to use it, and Parks and Rec or something is always pretty much open on Saturdays. So, you know, so if we wanted to do that, we'd have to make a motion, but we have a couple other.
Can I clarify one thing, Kev?
Yes.
So the reason why you see the last year's budget was $3,000, and the request was 22, so when, when Kev said it was out of Jerry's budget, that was out of the special revenue.
Special revenue, which is.
So now it's going to put in the general.
And special revenue is much lower, so now we're just putting it into the general fund.
Well, what's happening to special revenue?
It's taken a massive hit over, with the COVID and, and revenue and so forth like that, a lot of money was paid out to people, and we just weren't getting the revenue, especially that first year, it was really, really tough on, on us.
Yeah, the special revenue fund took a $180,000 hit, the 630, 2020 budget year, so, you know, so think about it, COVID, you know, started in March, or, you know, whenever, 2020, and so for those three years, everyone was like locked in their houses, but people were still getting paid, right, so they wanted to, you know, so a lot of instructors, I believe, based on my historical knowledge, I don't know 100% what happened, but, you know, to, you know, from where I came from, Brookfield, we still paid a lot of those instructors for the first couple of months before everyone figured out what was happening, and so I imagine, seeing that the expenses were still on par year over year, but there was less revenue, I'm thinking, you know, we still paid some of those people, but we weren't getting the revenue, and that really depleted that special revenue fund real quick. I mean, I think it had 220,000, and we, 90% of it disappeared, so right now, they're, you know, they're hovering around the $30,000 mark, so there's not much there, so he's really trying to, that's what he's trying to preserve as best he can and build that back up. So that's why he moved, he was looking to move that custodian line there, I mean, that's a $19,000 positive swing for him. So they're looking to move some of that stuff, so.
Yeah. Okay, and then similar, and under building, line 216, service contracts, reduction, and here again, I, we, I talked with Joe Burgow about it, we talked with Joe about this yesterday, and Joe's the one that suggested and was comfortable with a $2,100 reduction from 61,300 to 59,200, and then a $5,000 reduction in building maintenance expense, he said, he's very comfortable they can absorb that from 56.3 down to 51.3, so those would be the three adjustments to, from what was, I initially, we initially presented to where we are now. And then any other items anyone would like to discuss in there?
Okay, would you just summarize the three changes that?
Okay, the three changes are the $9,000, reducing the overtime request, or the money for overtime for weekend custodians from 21,000 to 12,000. Reduction of $2,100 from service contracts from 61,300 to 59,200, and then in line 222, building maintenance expense of $5,000 reduction from 56,300 to 51,300.
And I see on the worksheet that there were, there was some reduction in hours as well.
There's some reduction in hours. I know there's, the, the plan is to reduce, there'll be a reduction in, for overtime, and that, at the, at the, for the, and for the custodians and so forth like that. I mean, for three, I mean, for three, yeah, for three, for 314, that's where the reduction in hours would be. Any other comments or any other lines on that budget you'd like to address?
Just on the building maintenance, the 5,000, and Joe Burgow, he feels confident that they can absorb that without any.
Yes, I hear you, Joe, Joe offered these cuts up.
Okay.
So, I mean, because, you know, because, you know, I went to many of the larger department heads, told them we're going to need to see some, you know, find some efficiencies.
Yeah.
And, and I said, you know, it'd be better if they, if they could identify that, it makes it, you know, better.
Well, if an employee who was working 40 hours a week, and then is now working 30 hours a week, is that?
No, we're not doing that at all, no, it's just, there's, no, no one, okay, the only person that's had hours, I see what you're talking about, George, who was working in this building tonight, George voluntarily, he was working full, 40 hours over at the public safety building, but, you know, he's at a point now where he wanted to come back here and work just 30 hours a week, or, you know, so he voluntarily, by his own decision, wanted to cut back to 30 hours, that's the only reason that would have done.
Okay, so there's no, no cost in this in terms of anybody losing?
No, not at all, I, I misunderstood what you said, no, George wanted to come back, so he reduced his hours, and by his own choice.
So there's another employee in that same budget, that same thing, I don't want to mention names, but again, reduced from 40 hours to 30, so what I'm wondering is, where are these extra hours that these people have lost, where are they appearing elsewhere?
The, the, at the public safety building, we have two people over there now for public safety, because they were founded, just one person working, you know, from like noon to 8:00 was not enough, they needed someone in there a little bit longer, so there's two people there.
Thank you.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, for those.
Okay, so I'll move to adjust the bill, maintenance of town buildings budget, number 113, the line item for overtime from 21,000, adjust it, reduce it by 9,000 to be 12,000, and then down to, we are at service contracts from 61,300, reduce by 2,100, that total will be 59,200, and the third adjustment to this budget is building maintenance expense, an adjustment of $5,000 reduction from 56,300, that brings us to $51,300.
I'll second.
Okay, so move to second, any further comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, that carries unanimously. General government and benefits, we have a couple of, are actually two, very good news, actually, in healthcare, as we were talking, we were looking at 10 to 12% early on, then it came in at 10%, the latest is 7.1%, and it looks as though, you know, that won't be final until next month, but I've never seen it go up once they've come out like this, and there's some hope that, and we're not going to budget this, that it may even go down a little bit lower in the final estimate, but right now, I had done a reduction of, based on the first thing, of 129,293, but then we got the extra news, here again, it'd be nice to say, oh, we can reduce it to 7.1, well, we really can't because we're, you know, people will be coming on the program, you know, you know, if we add some people and stuff like that, so it's, but we still are able to reduce it another $55,549, which would be 9.39%, which is so much better than we were anticipating. And then in retirement liability, we've already talked about, we've talked about that in the previous thing, so.
So can I just add a couple of things, Kev?
Yes, you may.
Okay. The, I could tell, I can, if I hear myself echo, I know I'm being picked up, so the 896,805 for the FICA Medicare, that is a calculation, okay, so at the very bottom of this work paper, that you guys can't see, there's a, there's a little calculation where I add all of, all the salary lines, and then I multiply that by the 7.65%, so as we make cuts to any salary lines, that number will change automatically, all right, so it's a calculation. Second, second one, pension, you probably noticed there, it's grayed out, it's, but it's gray for you, but it's red for me, around that 649, 830 in the department requests, that is a placeholder right now, the pension board is working through, looking at the rate, the rate of return that we get, the calculated rate of return, right now we're at 6.5%, our rating agency, the last call, they recommended 6% and so at the May meeting, I think it is, right, Kevin?
They'll make that decision.
They'll make that decision, but that has a financial impact, so whatever they decide, if they decide to lower that number, this will, will go up, because we'd have to, we'd have to pay more money in December, so I just want to leave that there, we're not quite sure what will happen.
Well, I think it's good to point out too, that at, at that meeting, one of the things the pension board did a little over a year ago was, if not longer, they reduced the anticipated rate of return from 7% to 6.5%, so they got ahead of most other town, most other agencies and municipalities in doing that, so when the market correction hit last year, it hurt us, but it still showed us, we're still funded at about 85%, where a lot of towns suffered a lot more than that because they left that rate up too high, and, you know, there's a little, our fiduciary said, you kind of, you know, made the adjustment early enough to where they didn't think, their recommendation was, you're okay at 6.5%, but here again, that's something for them to decide right now, you know, bonding agency said that, but. You know, bonding agency said that, but here again, they didn't take it, I don't think they addressed the fact that we had taken in that seven percent and already made a reduction.
And then just to touch on the pension, the pension board is gonna be coming to the Board of Selectmen, I believe, next month?
April.
Okay, April, to give a presentation about the budget, about the pension and, you know, all the numbers and everything around that, so.
Because when we adopted the, made them a board last year, one of the things is they have to report yearly to the board, which is, yeah. It's really good, and it's very encouraging to see where we sit with other towns and municipalities. You know, there's some really great people, there have been great people on that board, watching out for our, making sure that we don't experience the, cause Norwich had to go out and take out a seventy-five million dollar bond to fund their pension system, you know. We're, definitely.
So we'll, we'll give you all the, you know, all documents, so in a, so in a month.
But generally, if the, if it goes from six and a half percent to six percent, then our obligation goes up approximately how much? I mean, is it the same ten percent?
Oh, golly, there's, there's a bunch of different factors that the pension board's working through right now. Part of it also, there's a, so right now, we amortize losses and gains for each year over a five-year period. So it kind of smoothes things out. So if, last year, you know, say we, we, we made a million bucks, it doesn't show a million dollars, it shows two hundred thousand, and then every year it amortizes that, it's kind of wonky. But they're looking to do it over ten years, right, at least I thought it was kind of wonky, but it makes sense. So they're kind, they're exploring to push that to ten years. That has a dramatic impact on the pension contribution number, so there's just a lot of factors. So if we dropped the, the rate to six percent, it would have a, it would have a significant impact. I, I, it's not like a one-to-one correlation, I don't have the exact dollar amount of. So I just put in a five percent placeholder, so.
Roughly five percent, you say?
No, I just put in a five percent placeholder because.
That's where I anticipated right now. You know, if the economy was robust, that money, you can see, last year, we put in six eighteen, but because of the adjustments, and we thought we were gonna be able to do much better than this this year, but because of, you know, making sure that we are able to meet our. And here again, we're not worried about the next five or six years, we're worried about, we have to make sure we're worried about fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years down the road, so.
So it was, it was between, you know, five hundred to seven hundred in that range. So at six fifty, we're kind of on the higher end. In the future years, so, you know, in April, we'll discuss this more, but in the future years, this number grows, so, we'll talk about that.
I'm just trying to get a feel for the rest, that's all. Ten K, fifty K, a hundred K, you're trying to, you know.
Big, big dollars with the pension. Six digits.
Okay, thank you.
And then health insurance, like Kevin said, we're at seven point one percent. So you'll notice we're at eight point oh one percent. That additional one percent is the health, anticipated health insurance for the deputy finance, the anticipated deputy finance director. Half a firefighter and a couple of police officers and things like, new, new hires, I'll sleep at that.
New hires, right.
And then retirement liability, I think I spoke last meeting about this. In the prior years, even though it says three hundred fifty-nine thousand one forty, I believe the budget was like one twenty-five, and then you rolled it over year after year. And I, I think I spoke, and said, that's really an additional appropriation, and we should get away from that, and so that's what we're doing here. So. But I still need that money, so that's why it's three hundred thousand and not one twenty-five.
And then you can see our, our other expenses as far as legal services.
Why is that line blank?
We stopped paying it.
Oh, that, yeah.
Legal services is like the, the category name.
That's the category name, that's not highlighted.
And under that, it's like transcripts and everything, okay?
I love to have that nice flag way up, way across.
So I think the only change we have that we need to vote on is the healthcare dental insurance adjustment by Board of Selectmen. So I'll move to make that adjustment of eighty-four thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars, giving us a total of, to simplify here, two, let's see, two million two hundred and fifty-one thousand forty-four dollars.
I'll second.
Then moving to second, any further comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Moving on to the services to the community, we've added the Giving Garden and the Blue Door and the, we, the Student Government Award, we moved from one thousand to two thousand. So that's the only thing that requires some action.
Can I just mention one more thing?
Yes.
Sorry for interrupting every two minutes, but you'll notice a couple, last week, I think it was, someone mentioned that the SACCEC was seventeen hundred dollars. I made the adjustment, I don't know where I got that seventeen hundred dollars from, it was probably a late night, I moved it back to the six fifty, once I confirmed.
Okay.
So, just wanted to say I made that adjustment.
That was their request.
That was their request, yeah.
So what is that under?
That is SACCEC.
I see it.
Yep, I just moved it back, originally it had seventeen hundred in there. Not quite sure where I, where I got that from, so I adjusted it back to the, the actual letter request.
Okay.
And then last meeting, we talked about that scholarship.
Right.
But we didn't vote on it.
Right.
No, we did not, yeah, well, that wouldn't have been up there.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion to adjust Board of Selectmen adjustment of one thousand dollars to be added to the Eastline Student Government Scholarship for a total of two thousand dollars.
Moving to second, any other comments?
I will abstain.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and Roseanne for one exception. Moving on to zoning, you can see just really nothing there at all. Everything is pretty much decided there. Part-time, I'm planning, right now for part-time clerical, where they had done, I had moved that to, I was gonna move that down to fifteen hundred, and I think I failed to tell you, I wrote it in my book, but.
I didn't get that.
Not that, you and I have been going through this book so much, no wonder, so. But anyway, if you look at the history and so forth, going through that, the part-time clerical, I think fifteen hundred would be more than good for that. So it'd be one seventeen, one hundred, four one two, part-time clerical, move that from two thousand, reduce it by five hundred to leave it where it currently is at fifteen hundred.
Oh, so, seeing. So we're in planning and I see three adjustments.
Yeah, one adjustment, I made the fifteen thousand dollar adjustment previous, you have fifteen thousand in your.
I have fifteen hundred.
Okay.
Oh, you made a fifteen thousand dollar.
No.
Oh, okay.
That was with respect to the Assistant Town Planner.
Okay, what are we looking at?
I'm looking, you must have, you must have made these, I must have given you the adjustments, because they have, already have fifteen hundred.
But for miscellaneous supplies, though.
No, I, at part-time clerical, I have two thousand.
Yeah.
Is it fifteen that, or is it?
It's still.
So do you want to reduce that?
Yeah, that, that's what I wanted to reduce by five hundred to fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred.
Yeah, I didn't have that.
Yeah, for part-time clerical and planning. No, yeah.
By five hundred, okay.
Yeah, fifteen hundred.
Now, that would be what it was in twenty-three.
Yeah, and, and that's where they've been running, so it's, it's not.
Okay.
It goes down to fifteen hundred.
You need a motion to reduce it.
Yeah.
And we have a couple of others in that department too, on the second page, I think.
Yeah, miscellaneous supplies, but I already did that, so.
Let's see, let me just take a look.
So just one Board of Selectmen adjustment.
Is there, what am I looking at there? I'm still in one seventeen and I'm on the second.
That fifteen thousand, the fifteen hundred are Board, are first Selectmen adjustments, so it's the one gray column to the right.
Right, 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 but I'm still seeing printing, I'm seeing under BOS, oh, BOS, I'm, I'm looking for, sorry.
That's what we've.
Yeah, it's, it's gray versus white.
Looking at all the numbers all day.
Yeah, well.
Okay, got it, got it, thank you.
Young eyes looking at these either.
Yeah, and then they're really small, so, next year, promise, eight by fourteen.
Thank you.
Do that, but, okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so, let me just make that, okay, so I will move to adjust a Board of Selectmen adjustment, reducing part-time clerical in the Planning Department, Department one seventeen, five hundred dollars to a total of fifteen hundred dollars.
I'll second.
Okay, so moving to second, any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So I have a question on the new Assistant Town Planner, it looks like you reduced it by fifteen thousand.
Yes.
Is that something we have to vote on?
No, I had already done that, that I did, I might have, I done when I, when I presented it to you, so that you're, we're not changing what I had recommended.
Okay, it's perfect.
Yeah. Okay, moving on now to Finance Department, one eighteen.
Starting to sweat.
No, don't, here again, as you can see, and the, right now, the staff director, the staff accountant, which is what will be the best way to describe, that will be the Deputy Finance Director, Purchasing Officer. Right now, it's thirteen thousand eight five seven, that's a part-time position right now, and that person is planning on leaving fairly soon anyway. So it would be seventy-two thousand dollars, that would be the new, but that's only part, because here again, that individual, some of their pay will be compensated from by water and sewer, because, you know, of the interaction and so forth like that. And I think, just like today, today payroll had to get out by three o'clock. Novantime, there's some programmed glitches in it that are beyond, and it took some time doing that, so I, so Kevin, Anne, I think you're with me. Kevin, I'd say, okay, I got you for five more minutes, and then I gotta run to budget to run back to Novantime. This is where, if we had that staffing in place, somebody else could be handling that, and we could still continue to, to, to fine tune the, the last, the last prep for the budget. So, you know, obviously, I'm very much in favor of this position. And I think it's been identified by auditors, Boards of Finance in the past, so I think it's, anyway, so. But I did make sure I went after him a little bit on overtime, he wanted, I, I cut him from sixty, twenty thousand six hundred and fifty-three to fifteen thousand, so. I just make sure that way you can't get everything you want. So any other concerns in that item? I won't address those, I think the person to address those is right here, if you have any. Okay, so we don't need to?
Make any motions unless anyone has any other change in that.
Nope.
In the Accounting Clerks and Fiscal Assistants, how many people is that?
So that is three clerks, I have accounts payable, payroll, and accounts receivable.
Was that Roseanne?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Moving on to contingency, here again, there's the, we've reduced the proposed, you know, payroll contingency downward, because we'll be coming up with dispatchers and police this year, as well as firefighters. I think Kevin has done a, I think that's a more than ample number to cover that, but here again, we don't want to be caught short. And he asked for two hundred and fifty in contingency, I moved it down to, uh, two hundred.
For the operating contingency, okay.
And real.
Well, I, actually, I did fifty and fifty, a little bit on both, but I'll let Kevin talk to that, though.
Just real quick, the personnel contingency, right now, my calculation's almost three hundred even. And we're, we have to put money aside for the three union negotiations, so it's not in their line items, because we haven't negotiated it yet, so we don't put it there, we put it in a separate line. So just my calculations, I have, for my salary contingency, I have two hundred ninety-eight thousand five eighty-five accounted for. So there's a little wiggle room there, but it gets kind of dicey if, you know, there's any kind of unexpected changes in any department, we'd be short, so.
And, you know, contingency, this year's experience, in the past years, we've been really good at contingency. I hate to say it, I think the last time we hit it really hard is when, a couple of years ago, when the fire truck had the engine, had the, the major problem with the engine, it required a twenty-plus thousand dollars. But, you know, so that's there, and if, we won't, we don't want to say anything about this year, because I don't want to jinx anything.
I just want to say with the, the second contingency there, for fuel utilities, oil, et cetera, as we look down the Public Works budget in a few minutes, you'll notice some of his accounts, he really sacrificed some money. And, you know, so I, I think it'd be important to carry, you know, a sizable contingency there in case.
Yeah, keep it where it is, right.
Down the road.
But that's still a reduction of what we were doing in twenty-three.
Yes.
And I, I don't, I don't think that's, I don't think that's a wise decision. Anybody that pulls up to the gas pumps now.
Well, we're locked, our, our gas price, our fuel prices are locked in for next year.
True.
So, you know, that won't be a problem.
So really, this is for if, we have an extremely cold winter, because the price is locked in, but the volume isn't. So if we, you know, got rid of something, you know, adverse weather conditions, you know, and a lot of vehicles or buildings, you need to be heated more, then that's where, you know, that would come into play, so, amongst other issues.
That's even true with the gas, because if we use the vehicles more than expected, we maybe know what we're gonna pay per gallon, but we don't know how many gallons we're gonna use.
I mean, there's a, there's a calculation, and I'm sure Joe has, spreadsheet's on spreadsheet.
Yeah, Joe does, Joe does.
And he does, actually.
Calculate for more than you'd expect, and he does make sure he budgets.
He has monthly gas, fuel, propane reports by department, by vehicle.
Yeah.
He is, he, he's the data guy.
Yeah.
Well, we can always take money out, but there's no way to put money back in.
So, Roseanne, are you, are you thinking that the contingency for fuel and utilities and oil should be higher, is that?
Well, we had it at two thirty-three, and then there was a request for it to be two fifty, and now we've cut it to two hundred thousand, which is a fourteen percent drop. And I understand, I knew that the price was locked in, but it's, it's not just about the price, it's about the number of gallons. So what happens if we, if we, if we, if we leave the money in and we don't use it, then?
Well, we still have to tax for it, though, that's what I think.
And we go to, go to.
That rolls into fund balance.
Yep, in the fund balance at the end of the year.
Whereas in the prior years, I think the, the practice was to roll it from year after year, but really, that's, this isn't the appropriate fund to do that. So that's what we got, we got a bunch of for the.
That's exactly what we used to do.
Yeah, cause that's really an additional appropriation at the start of the year. You know, you're asking for more money, you know?
Well, if that's the feeling of the expert, then I'll go with it.
And so, and then just to give you some sense of, you know, this year, we have not, we haven't touched, we will be in the next month touching the salary one for about two hundred eighty-eight thousand. I've gotta do an allocation of the various departments, but the, the fuel, utility, oil contingency, we have not touched.
Yes, but we've had a very mild season too, where we had fewer vehicles out on the road twenty-four hours a day, so. If that was the recommendation from the department head, then.
Well, his recommendation was two fifty, I cut it to two hundred.
Oh, you're the culprit.
Well, it says right there on the thing.
I know. Well, I think we ought to leave a few things for the Board of Finance to cut.
Yeah, I think we need to let them find their own stuff, cause we need, we need, we need to find more stuff.
Okay, is there?
I'm going to make a motion.
Okay.
I'm just going to pull up the fuel account.
Did you say you weren't going to make a motion?
No, no, I'm not.
Okay. Okay, uh, we'll move on to the Board of Finance, which is not much there. Um, Kevin, why do you need so many more supplies? No, no, I'm only kidding.
Do you see the size of these budget workbooks?
Well, you know, one of the, you know, one of the things, too, is Dave Garside wanting to digitize so much down, I mean, just the, how many forests have we taken down in, you know?
I'd love to buy you all laptops, but the smaller screen than the eight by eleven might be a big problem. Might buy five two, put them side by side there.
Okay, moving on to, uh, Board of Assessment Appeals. Um, when, and I talked to Diana about this, she had put in forty-one hundred and twenty-five dollars for part-time clerical recording secretary, that's what she budgeted for the reval year, so I mentioned about taking, uh, reducing that to seventeen fifty, taking twenty-three hundred and seventy-five, and she said she had no problem with that. The, next month, they only have, uh, six appeals for now, and she said they'll only have a handful coming up on that, so she said she's perfectly comfortable with that. But here again, that's a reduction I made, so.
Yeah, he asked it, I, I put it in the first segment cut.
Okay, that's
Okay.
Save one more motion.
That's fine.
Anything else on, ZBA is pretty mu, you know, not much.
Straightforward.
Yeah. Here, you, you add ten dollars there, and it goes up eleven percent, but same thing, now, in the wetlands is, uh, here again, this is the other half of that thirty, Gary had asked for sixty thousand, uh, I cut it in half to, you know, fifteen thousand for a GIS, so, but now it'd be a total of thirty, which is a lot more than they had now, um, and, you know, he, so he's got some ideas for that, and here again, he was comfortable with the, with the reduction I made there. Any comments there?
So that would be part-time, then?
Yeah, yeah, thirty thousand would be part-time. In fact, it, it could be a couple of part-timers.
Okay.
So.
So this is in both the planning department as well as
In the wetlands, it would probably, it's, the, the interns we've had this year, Ally Christensen and Sam Gary have both been paid under that account, so, anyway. And Sam will be leaving us next week because, you know, because he's been working with the Charter Revision Commission, but he got a full-time job up in the Boston area, and he starts Monday, so we wish him really well, it's a great job for him. Moving on to, uh, one thirty-three, Waterford Shellfish Commission, there's a dollar in there, just to keep the line open, but that was based on the chair of that commission, and Kevin verified that, "You're sure?", and he said, "Yep."
They've got enough money.
So they, so they get a dollar.
I don't even know if I'm going to give him the dollar.
Well, whatever, we don't have to.
I think a fifty cent should be enough.
Moving on to, uh, Brookside Farms, uh, uh, they had forty-one hundred and eighty this year for a curator, and they had come up with twenty-five thousand, they asked, and I, I did speak with the members of the commission, uh, we had a meeting, and I said, "Look, we'll bring that up to sixty-one eighty, and, you know, we can't keep it at twenty-five, but if they were able to find someone", because they were going to look, I said, "Then come back", but I didn't want to budget for something they don't have yet. Um, and here again, that's what it is, so they were comfortable with that, I told them, "Go ahead and look for it", but we did move it up to sixty-one eighty, and, you know, that's really the only major change in their budget.
Seems like a really random number, does sixty-one eighty mean anything?
I, I don't know, because it, I, I think they had a, a part-time curator one time, that that's what she was paid.
Yes, they did.
And that was, that was her pay, so that's why it's there.
I remember that from finance, I remember that number.
But that was the forty-one eighty, not the sixty-one?
No, I, I cut it to forty-one eighty last year, because they, they didn't have anybody at all.
Okay.
Anyway, so nothing there? Okay. Town Building Committee is zeros. You know, here again, they're, they're rarely meeting now, so if anything, that might be a, a total of seven hundred and fifty dollars moving on, that we can, you know, do a, a line transfer as you're going on, because without any projects ongoing or
Like, they're meeting.
Yeah. Harvard Management Shellfish is another one where, um, we've, uh, their, uh, request was, we kind of cut it way back because we've established, and we've talked about this, a revenue account. The money here is twelve hundred dollars to cover the cost of a part-time clerical recording secretary and the shellfish warden, you know, their compensation, but outside of that, they'll be getting seventy-five dollars per mooring, and that should bring in roughly at least eighteen to twenty thousand dollars of revenue after paying the company, because they're going to have a, a, a service mail out the mooring renewals, and with the increases and, and fees and that, it'll allow them to do a lot more, too. But that money will go to, uh, the, the revenue will go to them, and there is a, there is a statutory requirement that the mooring fees are supposed to go to the company, the, uh, the management, uh, shellfish, Harvard Management Shellfish Commission, and we could look at next year possibly, depending upon how it goes, take out the, uh, part-time clerical recording secretary and shellfish warden as well, but we wanted to leave that in there just as a buffer for this, for this year.
I just want to point out, it's, um, it's more than just a revenue account, it's a special revenue fund.
Fund.
It's a whole fund.
Yes.
So I would probably have to, I got to check, but I think I have to come before the board and
To establish it.
To establish it.
Establish it, so that'll, that'll be
I thought they already had it.
What?
That's the special revenue that was
No, not, not
Not that I'm aware of.
No, we're, we're going to, we're establishing, we're, we're in the process of establishing, but they, they haven't, uh, they don't have that. Because one of the, the alternative would have been to basically increase their budget line to whatever the revenues would be, and then we'd have to bump, bump their budget way up, so, you know. But, uh, moving on to the Conservation of Natural Resources, uh, just a little bit of, uh, an increase in, um, meetings and conferences and so forth like that. He wanted to go up to eight hundred, I cut it down to two hundred, uh, everything else pays, just up a little bit there.
The two hundred covers the meeting and conferences and training?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
It was seven thousand five hundred last year.
Historic properties, uh, really not much, sure that's down a little bit, and here again, that's based on, uh, what we did here on building maintenance, I think I, I discussed this before, um, right now, it's seven, uh, seven thousand four hundred. They had asked for twenty-five thousand three fifty because, uh, what they wanted to do was, uh,
Trying to find it, they had two projects.
Yeah, no, I had to flip the, of that seventy, of the total request, seventy-four hundred was for the siding replacement of the north back of the barn, which all, all require a number of people to purchase it on, on site, so that's there. But then they also asked for an additional seventeen thousand nine fifty for the replacement of the existing sixty-year-plus deteriorated wood shingle barn, uh, roof, and, um, I felt we've given them a lot of money through, uh, ARP over the last couple of years, plus we're giving them the seventy, seventy-four hundred here. I, I think maybe we need to just take a little bit of a break, you know, and, and put this off to, to the following year.
Who is the executive official to that commission?
I am.
Do you have any comment?
No, I don't remember about that, what, what they said about that roof. Um, I'm not sure what the, the status is of it.
Well, the roof is done, right?
Well, that, on the house, on the house, the house.
On the house, on the house.
This is for, this is for another
For another structure, yeah, I don't, I don't know what.
And we are providing, you know, seventy-four hundred for the siding replacement on the, on the barn.
Was there a grant for the, for the roof that was replaced? I sort of remember that grant.
They received, they got, they did get grants for that, yeah.
They did get some grant money that, you know, we had a, and they did get some grant money, and it was supplemented by ARP money, too, because one was for the beam, I think the grant was for it to study what work needed to be done, uh, you know, the, the inspection and, and evaluation, that was a grant, and then that identified what money was needed for that. If I remember, I'm trying to remember.
Yeah, but didn't the price also go up?
Yeah.
I think that was part of the issue, too, so they asked for one, and then it went up.
Yeah, and we gave, and we gave them more, and we gave them more.
But then they used the grant for the beam, I believe, right? They had to replace that.
No, I think that, I think that was to examine the beam or do something, you know, it got involved.
Any?
Yeah, but we, we did give them a couple of allocations under ARP to review that.
I was worried about the beam, I went to a tour one day, and the guy was telling me to show me the beam.
Okay, I think, uh, we're done with that, okay, moving on, historic, Public Safety Emergency Management, as you can see, this is up very, one point four percent, um, and, you know, the directors contractual, uh, the thousand dollars in EOC staff activation, we did that based on, uh, we did that based on, uh, past history and so forth like that. Everything else is pretty much contractual, and, uh, I think the chief explained, or, no, Julie, I believe, explained, because chief was here that night, the building maintenance going down, but then it moved into emergency resources, so just repurposing the funds there.
Do I have a question on that?
Yes.
It says here a twenty-two thousand dollar stipend by contract?
The chief, the chief's
That seems insane.
The chief's, the chief's contract, which was signed a few years ago, uh, pays him twenty-two thousand dollars as emergency management director, signed, uh, at least two years ago.
Is this a one-time payment, then?
It's a yearly payment.
Annual payment.
Annual payment, and we do get reimbursed, and here again, too, we do get
Right.
significant reimbursement for, uh, for costs, for the chief, not only for that, but for his salaries chief, because by him being the EMD, he does, we do get a stipend back from, uh, uh, you know, Dominion, or, we do get a
And this was part of his contract that this was included in?
Yes, yep.
Okay, got it.
Nothing else there? Dispatch is pretty, you know, straightforward, um, we're going to be, we just got notified by their agent, their union negotiator that, they need to set up some dates, but, uh, you know, uh, Kevin does have a little bit of a, an increase in there built into it, and it didn't do that, so, you know, we, this will, you know, this would cover, you know, the initial boost, but if there was like an additional, uh, I don't know what they're going to look for in their contract, but that, that would be reflected there, so that's Moving on to, uh, public safety, uh, and
Two sixteen, please.
Yeah, uh, police.
Okay.
Um, is, oh, you put it, did you put it under me? Or, no?
No, uh, there's a forty-three thousand.
Yeah.
See it there?
The, that's not in here yet?
No, no, it's, it's right there, that's that forty-three oh four-fourth.
Yes, that is, um, right there.
That's the bring-in both
Oh, yeah.
The November first date.
Okay, for some reason, Kevin, I don't have it on, I, I have the same sheet you do, but it's, didn't print out on it. Okay, well.
Two sixteen, one hundred, or?
So it's, um
Yeah, basically, uh, the chief was here last time, and, you know, uh, I told him two would be very, very difficult, he understood that, and he mentioned how the academy started in, uh, November. So, uh, Kevin and I talked about this, I talked with him today, too, and I said, "How would you feel if we backed it off and had hired the two people effective November first?" Because that would save, instead of, if we did, even if we did one and a half, one and a half would be eighteen months of salary plus benefits. This would be sixteen months of pay, uh, plus, and Kevin has calculated the benefits. It comes out to a, roughly between the benefits and the salary, comes out to about a sixty-six thousand dollar savings. A little over sixty-six thousand dollars in savings.
So we're budgeting thirty-five hours for each officer? So we shaved off seventeen weeks, seventeen weeks? Seventeen weeks off each officer. November first to June thirtieth is thirty-four and a half weeks.
I think they were forty-hour weeks, but
They what? No, 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 not hours, weeks in, total weeks.
Oh, weeks, I thought you said thirty-five hours.
In the budget, I budget weekly?
Oh, okay, no, no, I said, yes, okay, yeah. So that was it, so, you know, here again, it, it saves a considerable amount of money, but gets the, the people in, and, you know, if we had hired them the first of the, even if we did one in July, one in, uh, January, then, you know, we'd be
That's eighteen months.
That's eighteen months, and, you know, I caught you on that one, too.
Yeah, you, yeah, you had that one.
He said, "Well, why would you still want to have?", I said, "No, because one is sixteen, one is eighteen." So, if, I'm going to have dreams of numbers floating in my head tonight.
You don't already?
So anyway, any, any discussion on that?
Yes.
Uh-huh.
So, if we know that we have money committed, and we're going to do, do the hiring, can we get space saved at the training, at the training academy? Can we have slots held for them even though they haven't started working?
Well, you have to, you, because if we had the money allocated, then we know we have the, they'd go through the hiring process, so we'd have the slots in the academy, that's
Because that's been a problem we've encountered before.
Yeah, no, that's just it, if the money is approved, then we're set to go. But here again, they wouldn't ask for the slots before the budget were approved, if it, if it was included in the budget, anyway.
Right, but by holding it off until November, then that means it's how many weeks at the academy?
Uh, it's roughly about four, closer to six months.
When they're not, where they are not on active duty?
Well, they're, they are, they're going to the academy.
But, I mean, they're not on active duty at town.
No, no.
Not on patrol.
Right, so in fact, then we don't have them, if we wait until November, we've lost almost a year.
Well, we, if we hired them in July first, they couldn't go on the road, anyway, because they'd have to go to the academy, and they would not be able to go to the academy until this November, anyway. So we couldn't use them for anything, anyway.
So the police department probably wouldn't hire them until that
No.
Until, until they could
No, that's just it, that
Put them into a, a training program.
A police officer can't go on the road or really do much of anything until they attend the academy.
Right, but couldn't, but there's no academy that's open?
No, that's, that's the one the chief is planning on using, and when I talked to him today, he's fine with that.
November and April, the two times.
The, November and April, but my guess is he would probably go for both slots in, in November.
Is there anywhere we could just hire one police officer at this time, instead of two? Um, I, I feel like, I, I'm just looking at the, just the amount of money that, that we spend on them, you know, between the new building, the police accountability bill, everything else, um, and I think if we do one a year, then it, it still gets them what they need, and yet we're not, like, overdoing it, because you have all their benefits, you have, you know, everything else on top of that, too.
I'm going to disagree. I think that that's a poor area to cut in, we have increasing crime rates, as I mentioned when we had, uh, I don't know if that, were you here for the meeting when the, uh, police chief spoke?
Yes.
All right, every single day, you look in the newspaper, and the police logs are lengthy, including for East Line, with many of the people coming from out of town. We're the only town on the shoreline that has four exits off from ninety-five, and almost every single day, this is a big uptake, uptake, uptick, rather, almost every single day, there's at least three or four apprehensions. And we have significant business in town with big parking lots, with easy access, and I think the fact that we are, in my opinion, with only three officers on a shift, we're already at minimum staffing. And one thing that this board is responsible for, one of its biggest responsibilities, is public safety. And we have continually cut, every time there's been two officers suggested, "Well, can't we do with one?" We have seasoned officers retiring to be replaced by first timers, I think that's a big issue, unless we're able to hire someone from another town, and I just feel very strongly about this, that that is one of our big responsibilities. We also have a permit for, um, a marijuana facility in town, again, easy access right off from seventy-two. So I think it's very short-sighted, and I think that the amount of money it costs to ensure public safety is money that's well spent.
Other comment?
Yeah, I, I would like to agree with, uh, Roseanne, I, I feel, looking at all the new hiring or additional hours, you know, in this budget for twenty-three, twenty-four, this one, for me, is the most important, um, public safety being the most important, and when I was in Board of And when I was in Board of Finance, we had, we had requests year after year to bolster the new independent force. And, you know, we trimmed here, we trimmed there. And I think when the chief gave his presentation, his PowerPoint, it was very powerful in that I think he made a very solid case for the need for additional staff. And it's not, even back in the, in years back, before crime statistics were jumping, it wasn't all about crime. It's about motor vehicles and motor vehicle stops and accidents. And we've seen in this past year, twenty-twenty-two, there's been, you know, a high increase in, in, in all of these categories, whether it's arrests, whether it's investigations, you know, your number of calls, we've seen that through. Dispatch has given us that information. We've had that, you know, repeatedly told to us. So I, you know, I look at their, you know, you know, basically the responsibility of the police is to make us, you know, safe and secure. You know, us as residents, our guests, our people that visit the town, et cetera. So I, I feel it's a primary responsibility. I agree with Roseanne, the board of the town. And, you know, I think it's something we can't short-circuit any longer. I think those statistics that he provided this year were, you know, I think if you had doubt in your mind, I would think it would, you know, move the needle for you. So, and I agree with Roseanne about the three-person, three-person patrol. It may not be a model that is going to work in all of these more difficult circumstances. So, you know, I'm wholeheartedly in favor of the two. The request was for three. You have to remember, sometimes it looks like, well, we'll keep adding officers. But it, you know, we've basically been, have been asked to add and we've done it very, very incrementally. And the plan of the police commission was to do this over a span of time. So that's why it sort of looks that way, you know. But, yeah, I'm in, I'm in favor of the two. If I had my druthers and, you know, we weren't gonna burden the taxpayer, I'd hire them, you know, sooner than later. But we do have this benefit of having the November training period, start of the, starting time for the, for the training period. So we can, we can use that to our advantage and not have to overburden the taxpayer in that way.
I would say, I support the two officers as well. Looking at the statistics that were presented to us and the ratios of police officers to the population, we're at the low end. And we really, you know, we're seeing an increase in serious crime and they're on, they're on the go every minute. And it's not only, I mean, their job is to protect us, to keep us safe. But we have a duty to the police force to keep them safe. And if they're understaffed and overwhelmed, then we're not meeting our responsibility to them either. So I strongly support the two officers being hired.
And I'd also like to add that we have one officer in a car. Most communities have two officers in a car riding.
I would just beg to differ. There are very few in the state to do that. I mean, usually two people get sent to a call, but I know none in the area have two people in a, in a car.
What do you think, Phil?
I think we play, pay entirely too much for our police department. And I think we do that because there was a thirty-two percent increase in crime last year and a twenty-eight percent increase in crime the year before. I think that if we don't have that deterrent, we are in that neighborhood that people are gonna stop. We hear the stories that the stop and shop parking lot is an easy stopping place for, for crime. People transfer drugs, whatever they do. We know the hotel, we have an area in town that is a frequent stop. And the chief mentioned it, that there's a lot of calls up there. I'm looking at the presentation now that he gave because Sandy sent it out. And, and it just, I fully agree, we play, pay too much for police. I think we pay what we have to though, because I think crime is getting worse, not better. The idea of having patrolmen walking the streets of Main Street, I don't know that that's necessary. But I think having, having black and whites driving around the streets, I think, is a deterrent that we need. I think we're just kind of, we're, we're do easy picking right now. There's too many people reading the news, too many people driving up from New Haven or what have you and pulling off the highway and cutting off catalytic converters from the bus station or where have you. It's just, it's extremely unfortunate. I hate spending all this money, but I don't see a way around it. I don't see, you know, people afraid to walk at night and it's, I'm not gonna use the language I was gonna use, but I think we spend too much for the police department and I think we have to. And I think the whole idea of starting them halfway through the year, three-quarters of the way through the year, that's an impact on, you know, half a year's budget. But these guys are gonna be there for the next, you know, twenty, thirty, fifty years. So whether we hire them, hire them halfway through the year or not, that's, that's kinda, you know, that's, to me, not as important as the fact that we have to keep our citizens safe. So I agree with you. It would be nice if we didn't have to hire so many police. But we do.
And just in closing, and obviously, you know, my background, I try to be as, you know, as objective as I can in this. And I hear, and I hear your comments really well about, you know, slowing down. One thing I think what we've been doing in expanding our forces, we've integrated them so much into the community. We look at the National Night Out that was held at Flanders where hundreds of members of the community came in there. We have a school resource officer I think is by far the best in the state. He, you know, issues that never, that pop up are resolved by that too. And here again, there's training and more and more training going on to, as you could see when the chief made his presentation, in the areas of helping out, you know, if you have a mental health issue, they're the first ones you see. And what I was amazed at is, and impressed with is the lack of, you know, you look at use of force, how many, how few times it's ever done here. I think we have an excellently trained staff and a really good chief and management of the police department. So I think they're integrated in the community and I think they're providing, and I think of the deterrent they're presenting too. I think they have the trust of very members of the community. And with like the three-man minimum, I think we've had a three-man minimum since we had a town of about eleven thousand people. So I think that speaks, you know, we're up close to nineteen thousand now, much busier so. I think that, you know, it's one of those ones you wish you never had to have. It's sort of like we buy the ladder truck for the fire department. We spent over a million dollars on it and you hope you never use it. But it's something you have to have there. So that's why I'm comfortable with doing that. But here again, we are, you know, reducing their cost of a little bit. I know the commission itself, Sandy, they were even much higher than what the chief brought forward at one time as well. So.
And that's the part of the budget that I've struggled with, is we spent a lot of money buying the new building and saying we're gonna consolidate resources and we're gonna see some efficiencies by doing that. And I've looked at a book this year and I don't see a whole lot of efficiencies that I was hoping we would. There's a few, but then it's like, okay, we saved money here, so we're gonna spend it to buy drones and things like that and it's like.
Okay, we need, if we're comfortable with that, we need to make the motion to, everything else is already pre-done. Also too, the last one too, for the grant overtime, this is a thing we have to budget money for, but for the last couple of years, there's been no funding coming in. If there is a grant and they are really able to get to money, we.
Both sides.
Kevin said there's a way to, to address that too. But I don't wanna tax, you know, put it, we never use the money, but you have to tax for it. So I didn't feel comfortable leaving that in there right now.
So I will make a motion and I'll make a motion to decrease line item. And this is the Public Safety Police Department, Budget two sixteen, under Police Officers. Board of Selectment Adjustment of forty-three thousand, forty-four dollars for a total of two million, one fifty-one thousand and sixty-five dollars.
Can we put down here for the, for hiring a date of two officers?
Yes, yes. This, this scenario is for hiring two officers to commence in November of twenty-three.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Second. Any further comments?
I guess I would just say, I understand where everybody's coming from. I guess sometimes I just look at the costs, you know, of all of this. It just seems like out of anything, this is the one that seems to be the most. They do some, they, they do, the chief did say they do some lateral hiring. But, I mean, I understand everybody's position. I just feel like we have really spent huge amounts of money on the public safety building, the police accountability bill, the legal fees for that, and then it kinda just spirals. But that, that was why I was saying that I would prefer to hire one at a time, you know, versus two. But I understand how the board feels and it makes sense, you know, what you're saying. But that's where my position is.
And if I may, and I appreciate very much.
Very much so, right.
And, but I think we just, maybe we should take a step back just for a second and look at where we've come from. You know, we started off with a constabulary not so many years ago. And then we started our own police department. We're no longer involved with the state police, you know, and in that way. And we've come a long way. And yes, I mean, we did the building and I think they really needed that. But I think we've done very well. We're very fortunate, I think, to have the police chief that we have and the culture that has been created. I mean, there are other towns that don't have the positive culture, I think, that we have in our police force. And I, I just feel we're very lucky to have that. And I think it's important to show our support and do, we need to do it. That's, that's my feeling. But I appreciate your point of view.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you everyone for their comments, very valid comments on all spots. So if no other comments, all those in favor of the motion, seeing how I'm saying, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Carries five to one. Okay, moving on, Fire Department. You can see that we've made some adjustments in there and so forth like that to address, you know, we did lower, I did lower based on expenses, I lowered the overtime budget a little bit. Oh, yes, there it is. I was looking at the small print and it took me down to Flanders right away. That's okay. Any other, and, you know, made some other minor adjustments there and about seven. Any comments on that?
No, I just think that this is the same thing. Adding another firefighter is unfortunate, but I think it's necessary.
Oh, yeah.
And I think that we know that there's gonna be more around the corner coming.
Very much so, so.
I had a question on that, just in general.
Sure.
It said, every time I wrote this down, they have a fire, they call in all of the.
Oh, no, no, no. If it's a structure fire, a lot of calls come in as a structure fire. If it gets there and it's verified, a full structure fire. All the, all the paid firefighters are then toned out to come back.
Okay.
And it's happened three times and, because if they get called, I get a notification. I've been notified three times in the last year plus.
Like that Midway Plaza.
Midway Plaza was one.
Yeah.
Then there was another one up in Dean's Ridge where fortunately, it started out with one, but again, quickly was contained. And, but no, it's very rare that that happens.
Yeah, because I wrote that down and I was like, that, that's a lot if it's every fire.
Oh, no, it's not.
It's like, you know, your cooking catches on fire.
Well, that, that's the one on Dean's, the Dean's Ridge ones, what was that? So, anyway. Okay, Flanders, exactly the same there too. No, Fire Marshal, you know, is in here too. And, you know, this nice time refers to everybody in town, all the departments in town. I frequently get, you know, every so often, somebody comes in, they're upset about something. But vast majority of time, because you have the animal control officers, compliments about them, interaction with the police, Public Works, Water and Sewer, the departments in here. The vast majority, and Sandy, you would verify this, are people calling up to thank us for the service and so forth like that. And they're very appreciative of what they're, I was actually, the other day, I was, yesterday, somebody after me said, our roads look better than all the surrounding towns. I'm not gonna argue with them. So, you know, that, that needs to be passed on because, you know, at three o'clock in the morning when you're plowing, you're not really thinking about, you know, that. So anyway, so that moved on. Public Works and Highway, this is where we've got, there's gonna be some reductions. I made some. And as I said, I talked to the department heads and said, look, we need some, I need some, this budget is just way too big. So Joe came in, sat with Kevin and I yesterday. Joe said, give me a number and, or what you're thinking. I said, I gave him one and he said, do I get to pick? And I said, you know, I'll let him do it. So as you can see, the first one he took was road construction and repairs, where he came in and he offered twelve thousand from two-ten. And he said, this is based on looking at the previous year and so forth like that, two-ten to now one-ninety-seven-five. Scar tipping fees, Joe was involved with that. He said, very comfortable in taking three thousand out of that. I thought, how about something out of bulky waste and tipping? And he said, no. He's again involved, he said, nope. And then as we move down there, you see under Stormwater Materials and Supplies, he offered up eighty-seven thousand. He actually offered up more. And I said, no, eighty-seven sounds good. Because, you know, from two-twelve down to one-twenty-five. Because he's basing that on the fact that at where we stand with, you know, storms now, even though we have one yesterday, he feels very comfortable, we're gonna be able to be stocked full at the end of the season with this year, which he can translate into savings for next year.
So that's reduced materials for.
Yeah, that's, yeah, stormwater materials and supplies. Because, yeah, salt and so forth like that. He said, you know, we took a little bit of hit over the last couple of days and possibly this weekend. But, you know, that's, you know, we're in good shape, he feels, to do that. So he, he offered that up too. So, you know, we offer, we also asked about the town aid road programs. He said, no, those, he, that's what he really needs that, that stuff for. Because he said, it doesn't take much, you know, the road construction money and the road, you know, the big projects with the bomb. He said, that's one thing. This is if something comes up. And he said, especially if we have like a sewer main or something we have to repair, you have to put like, like nine inches of asphalt. So that, that money would come in. It wouldn't, you know, you hope that doesn't happen, but, you know, that can do that. So, so Joe, you know, so, you know, he offered a little bit more. I said, yeah, I think we got enough from him here. So if there's any other things here, and two I had cut that, tree warden maintenance to forty thousand dollars. And here again, from fifty, here again, Joe, Joe is aware of this and comfortable with him. Vehicle maintenance and engineering, he was comfortable with, you know, a little bit of a reduction there, keeping in line of where things are right now. And Fleet Fuel, he told us when he made his presentation, he made the miscalculation, it was two-seventy-five-eight, not two-thirty-four. And, and here again, when it comes to this too, and Joe, you know, some very good points were made about, you know, what happens if we use a lot. Joe tries to make sure that, he does sort of a worst-case scenario with that. And, you know, and if you go down, you look at his spreadsheets on things, it's just amazing what it looks like too.
And so when he sat with us, he was comfortable with that eighty-seven.
And so, when he sat with us, he was comfortable with that eighty-seven thousand dollar cut because that town aid road program, the last line there for three-fourteen-eight-forty-nine, uh, that can be spent on salt materials. So, if he runs out of money up top, he'll, you know, he'll do one less road, whatever he has to do to make sure he's got his salt and stuff like that, so.
Okay.
Okay, so we, yeah, for the, for the, for the twelve-five.
Just before you do that, was, was there any discussion, I didn't, I mean, I watched the, the film, but about with the new, um, scale and, and building at the transfer station, is there going to be any added operating costs or decreased operating costs or?
I, whatever it's anticipated, you already put in the building thing and that and so forth, but the, the, the most exciting thing, everyone is up there, it'll have an actual bathroom, so the poor guys won't have to outside. No, he's already, he's taken that into consideration and, you know, there'll be a lot of construction up there, but that, that expense has already been obligated elsewhere, you know, previously.
Okay.
He didn't really say anything about it.
Yeah. Okay, so in, um, a move to adjust Board of Selectment Adjustments for Budget Three-Seventeen, Public Works, Highway and Sanitation, uh, the first of these is a reduction of twelve thousand, five hundred dollars for road reconstruction and repairs. The total there would, with that reduction is one-ninety-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. The second adjustment is the scarif tipping fees, um, uh, three thousand dollars, uh, for a total of five-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars. And the third adjustment is in the line item, Stormwater Materials and Supplies, adjusting by a reduction of eighty-seven thousand dollars, the total to be one-twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
If we say aye.
Are you saying aye?
Aye.
Yeah, I know.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the next one is Commission on Aging. This is one where we left, Kathy Wilson is retiring, but we left what is budgeted for her for next year because if we found out anything over the last year, um, finding good people is, is very difficult. It, it took us, you know, ten months to, uh, or nine months to find a full-time building inspector, just because the resources aren't, aren't out there, so we didn't want to leave that number too low. We haven't advertised it at the rate it's in there, but we wanted to leave that in there.
That's good to know.
Yeah, okay.
I saw that number, it's pretty hefty.
But, but, yeah. Uh, but, you know, and, and with the bus driver and admin assistant, I think Kathy also, you know, she has one full-time, one part-time, and one semi-part-timer right now. Roxanne is indicating she wants to retire, but she hasn't given a da- given a date yet, so I think the thought would probably be to go to three part-timers because you'd get good coverage and you'd save some money and benefits and so forth, but until she says, "Yes, I am retiring," this is the date, we don't want to assume anything in there, which is why we've left that there. And, and, and.
I was going to say, I also thought it was interesting, she said that it was helpful to have three drivers who knew the people and where they were going.
Yes.
You know, you're dealing with older people.
Mm-hmm.
And they want to be familiar with you, so I thought that was really, really important.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean.
Most definitely.
Yeah, and, uh, and very so, and with Roxanne and the other part-timers, they do know the people that they're driving around.
Yeah, and where they're going and, you know.
And, and I would imagine that would still continue moving forward, no matter what we do, so, okay, there.
I just had a, a question, I think I forgot to ask Kathy. The part-time social worker, do you remember that? Yeah, which we had.
Oh, yeah, she, she.
Okayed with arpeggios.
She's, she's, she's waiting, she's going to let that, that her successor decide that.
That's right, that's what she said.
Yeah, she did, she did say that.
Yes.
And that.
So, she has the arpeggios and she's just?
She, she's thinking.
Yeah.
Let the new person, I remember this conversation also.
Okay, yes.
Let the, um, new person, a new director, um, you know, work with that person, bring them on, so.
And the Shoreline V and A, you've got some good news on that.
I do, so, um, I do. We can reduce this line, so I've been Kathy Wilson, shout out to Kathy because she did most of the work. I just didn't.
Surprise there.
Ever since a while.
Yeah.
Yep, um, yeah, she is, uh.
We know.
We're going to sadly miss Kathy, especially on the finance side, because she is very good with her numbers.
Yeah.
And, um, so, we originally budgeted fifteen thousand because of the last couple of months, they've been billing us seventy-five dollars per person they visit. Well, the contract is seventy-five dollars an hour, and when they see four or five people an hour, uh, it really jumped the price of this service, so Kathy came to me one day and said, "Kev, I don't think we're being billed appropriately." And so, we looked into it, we're not, so we can reduce this line to six thousand dollars.
Six thousand?
Yep, so we can take away sixty-five hundred, so we can cut it in half.
Oh, wow.
It's even less than what we had budgeted last year.
Right here, just, right here, this one.
Yeah.
So, yeah, the bills now are.
Is it just only twelve thousand, five hundred?
Yeah.
Cut that to six thousand, yep.
Oh, no, four-nineteen, yeah, four-nineteen, uh, it's basically the only line there.
Right, okay.
So.
So, yeah, the bills are ranging right now between three hundred and five hundred dollars, uh, five hundred times twelve, six thousand, so that gives us some wiggle room.
It gives, yeah.
So, sixty-five hundred to go down.
So, sixty-five hundred, okay. All right, so I can ma- I'll make a motion, uh, to.
To reduce that.
Wow, that's nice.
Before you do that, can we have a little other discussion?
Sure.
We discussed Program Services, how it's been flat for the last couple of years, and if we're going to de- yeah, the two-fifteen.
Commission on Aging.
Yeah, we go back.
I'm sorry, I'm back.
Go back, okay.
Right, here, all right.
All right, just a minute. Okay, so, and that's at, it's Program Services.
Program Services, it's been flat for twenty-four hundred dollars for a couple of years.
And it's staying flat at two thousand four hundred.
Oh.
And we talked about raising it, and we said that we would talk about it during deliberations.
What are those Program Services?
It's just, it just has ten generic, it just says entertainers come in.
Yes.
For an hour, ten times, two hundred dollars per performance for ten performances per year. It just, it just seemed to me like it would be the kind of area, especially if she found six thousand dollars, to at least bring that up to, to three thousand dollars or something.
Yeah.
And, I mean, this is, I mean, it's just a part of the community that we don't spend enough time taking care of.
Yeah. Commission on Aging budget.
Oh, pro- yeah.
About the middle of the page.
You know, the thing is, that's, that's what Kathy requested, so I'm comfortable going what she requested, I mean, I didn't make any adjustment to that, and, you know. And if somebody knew of the, a resource to get those people in, it would be Kathy, so.
So, you don't think she has people that?
What do you mean? No, I, I think, I, I think she utilizes that, but, you know, I, I'm not, I don't think she, she needs anything extra, she hasn't requested anything extra, so. Okay.
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 All right, so I will make a motion of, to decrease, um, Department Four-Nineteen budget by Board of Selectment Adjustment, six thousand, five hundred dollars, uh, for a total of six thousand dollars.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further comments? All those in favor, say, if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. And moving on now to Parks and Rec, you can see, uh, some of the adjustments I made early on.
Parks and Rec?
That's the lib-.
The library?
Oh, the library, I'm sorry, because, yeah, culture, it's only the one line, yeah. Any, anything on the library, and Lisa, if you're watching at home, my sincere apologies for skipping over you, because here again, you look at what has been done.
I don't think she's listening four hours later.
Yeah, yeah.
God bless her.
But anyway, anything on the library? Okay, that is, okay, now we'll move on to, uh.
Parks and Rec?
Yeah, Parks, Parks and Recreation. And, uh, as you can see, I made some adjustments early on in salary and so forth too. If you look on the second page though, where it comes down to Parks and Field Maintenance, he had asked for forty-nine-nine, which was a twelve thousand dollar increase. Um, and I, and I, here again, I've talked to, if there's a reduction that shows for requesting Board of Assessment, Board of Selectment Adjustments, I've talked to the department head, and I, I went out and talked, and, and not by email or by phone, I went out and talked to Jerry today, and I told him that, you know, we're kind of absorbing the costs of the overtime that he used to pay out of his funds, so we're going to keep, uh, the Parks and Field Maintenance at the same cost, thirty-seven-nine. And if you remember, a little over eleven thousand is what he was estimating the cost to hire someone to come in, a service to come in and do the bathrooms and that. And he said, you know, "Does this mean I can't use him?" And I said, "No, it's up to him." I said, "The thirty-seven-nine is his to, you know, best, best, you know, that's why we have them there to, to decide how to spend that." So, he understood that, he, he wished it could have stayed there, but he understood that, you know, everybody had to give a little, so he was very, very, very good about it, so, he was there. And then the other thing I told him is, uh, on the miscellaneous supplies, we're just going to take that down from, uh, fifteen-five to thirteen-five.
Okay. All right, so I will, I'll make a motion, uh, to, for Board of Selectment Adjustment for the, uh, four-twenty-one, uh, four-twenty-two Parks and Recreation Commission Youth Services budget, uh, to reduce, uh, line item, uh, two-hundred-dash-three-fifty Parks Field Maintenance by twelve thousand dollars for a total of thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred dollars. And the second adjustment is in the line item, three-hundred-three-twenty Miscellaneous Supplies, a reduction of two thousand dollars, uh, for a total of three, uh, thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Anne. Any comments? All those in favor, say if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carrie can answer. I think that completes all our departments. Is there anything anyone would like to go back and take a look at? Here again, this is our adjustment, the Board of Finance, obviously, will have to be able to weigh in on this too. I really have to give a, a shout out to, you know, I think the department heads have been really aware that this is a very tough budget season. You know, like, when you look at Town Clerk and the Assessors' Office, there's very little in there, uh, uh, as far as adjustment or an increase doesn't affect it. But when you see Jerry, you know, understanding, giving up, "Okay, I'll give up these two for that," or understanding that he had to take a bit of a reduction in that, Joe Burgot coming forward, uh, tucking to the chief and the fire chiefs about, you know, "I know they wanted two firemen, we, we did, we reduced that." Same thing there, there was a lot of cooperation, and none, none of this, "Well, why me? How come not them?" It was, it was really nice, uh, I, 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 here again, we've done a lot of work, we've got it down a lot, and Kevin has done a yeoman's job trying to identify additional revenues.
Yeah.
Because the more revenue we find, the less impact on the taxpayers. One of the things, uh, I had written down right now, if, uh, with, Kevin, what do you have for number for, uh, our budget right now, just the tat- whoops.
So, Town Oper- I'll walk, can we walk through all of them real quick?
Yeah, let's walk through all of that real quick.
So, Town Operations, we are at twenty-one million, six-thirty-seven, five-ninety-eight.
Okay. Can you hang on a moment?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just because I, I've got that someplace else, thank you. It's been a little.
Yeah, if you noticed, I just dropped mine on the floor.
Right, Kevin, yeah, yeah.
So, the only one, um, well, not with me, not with the camera, I don't want to be underneath it. It can, it can stay down there. So, I'll just say, the only number that's going to change is the Town Operations number. Oh, we had the other three departments, so we had those changes, uh, in there already.
Okay.
So, uh, so let me know when you're all ready.
So, Town, so Town Operations.
You ready?
Yeah.
Town Operations, twenty-one million, six-thirty-seven, five-ninety-eight.
And what does that turn into for a percent change from last year's budget?
Year-over-year, five-point-four-eight percent. And just a little statistics.
What was it, five-point what?
Five-four-eight.
Five-four-eight.
All right, and then it's just a little, uh, statistics, the Town Operations is twenty-four point seven-seven percent of the budget, and we represent fifteen point seven percent of the increase.
Okay, all right.
Next up, Board of Ed?
Uh-huh.
We didn't touch it, so it's exactly the same number.
We can't, yeah.
Fifty-eight-nine-one-four-eight-five-two.
Wait, fifty-eight-nine-one-four?
Yep, nine-one-four-eight-five-two. The, these next three numbers are exact, we didn't make any changes at all.
Okay.
So, fifty-eight-nine-one-four, it's an eight-point-eight-eight percent increase, uh, it represents sixty-seven point four percent of the budget, and the increase is sixty-seven point one percent of the budget. All right, see a lot of tons moving?
Debt Service?
Yep, Debt Service, you ready, Anne?
Yeah.
I see you writing over there. You good? Okay. Debt Service, uh, si- same number, six million, one-ninety-eight, one-eighty-nine. All right, it's a twenty-six point three-eight percent increase. It represents seven percent of the budget, but the in- on the increase side, it's an eighteen, eighteen percent of the budget increases that.
Second, last part again?
So, um, so I, I have two factors. So, one factor is what percentage of these, like, cost centers are a percentage of the budget, and then what percentage of those costs, uh, cost centers attributed to the budget increase, right? So, the Town's Operations on the Town side, we're at twenty-four point seven-five percent or twenty-seven, twenty-four point seven-seven, right? But we only, we represented only fifteen point seven percent of the increase. So, the, on the Towns, you know, we were, we're attributing to dropping the number on the Town side. So, um, Board of Ed, uh, you know, sixty-seven point four percent they represent of the budget, they represent sixty-seven point one percent of the increase. Debt Service represents seven point oh-nine percent of the budget, it is responsible for eighteen point one percent of the increase. Capital is less than one percent of the overall budget, point seven percent, and it represents a negative one percent increase on the budget, it was less than the prior year.
What was the number for the capital?
Yeah, what was the dollar?
Same number, six-ten-eight-forty.
Ten-eight-forty.
Because the only, we made two changes, we did the seven-fifty, we took out a park and rec. And we added the zero-turn mower, and that was for five-year financing.
Oh, that's right, yes.
So, it had no impact.
Okay.
The general fund budget.
Okay.
This year.
Okay, so the overall change from last year, dollar-wise?
Eight-point-eight-six percent.
Okay, and what is the, what is that dollar more?
So, um, the dollar amount increase is seven million, one-hundred-fifty-seven thousand, two-fourteen.
And that includes everything, correct?
That's all the changes we've made today.
Okay, now if you subtract, now you would subtract anticipated revenue, correct, from that, a seven, because that's not, that's what the increase is, but we have some revenue to cover that.
So, let's get to the revenue side.
Okay.
So, revenue numbers, taxes, the tax impact is less, so, let me just break it down here. All right, taxes, sixty-nine million, nine-one-four, one-nine-one. All right?
Say that again, six, uh, sixty-nine?
Six-nine?
Nine-one-four, one-nine-one.
Perfect, yep.
One-nine-one, okay.
And then, let me just look here, five-five thousand, nine-one-two, four-four, ten-thousand, eight-one, ten-three, fourteen, ten. The rest is the same.
The rest is the same.
We didn't make any changes.
Okay.
Let me just verify, seven, just one more, we didn't make any changes. So, the only change was to the current tax year, now remember what I said, that number changes, it's a calculation, so we made a few more cuts, and that's why we reduced the expenses by approximately seven thousand, and then we reduced the tax by seven thousand as well. So, um, so percentage wise, current year taxes, uh, it's gonna be a seven point four-five percent increase. So now, you, you heard me say earlier, expenses is an eight point eight-six percent increase, but the taxes is only seven point four-six, or four-five. That's because the other, uh, revenues we have increased by greater than the budget. So the, uh, you know, the impact felt by the taxpayers is less than the budget increase. Does that make sense?
It's still a tax increase.
It's still a tax increase, but it's not, it doesn't go up the same percentage as the expenditure side.
No, you're right.
Because some of the other revenues went up greater.
Right.
By the.
So it offset it.
So.
Yeah.
So when we look down at the, the, when we start looking at the mill rate and everything, it's still the same number. I mean, we moved aside, you know, th- there was, uh, seven thousand dollars, we moved it. Cause I had all those changes already in the budget, right? So, we're still at twenty-five point four-seven mills, um, propos, you know, proposed, with a one point six-three mill increase. Uh, the increase is six point eight-four percent. All right? Now, and that factors in elderly tax relief, and that gives, that's at a collection rate of ninety-eight point two percent. All right?
And we're holding, and?
That's, yeah, I've gotta do a little, um, a little more research on that, but.
We're right there though, cause.
That's, that's, I mean, that's, we come in every year, right around there, so. Yeah.
Okay, and roughly, if your house is assessed at two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, uh, and this is, this is, I think, helps people a lot, they, they can put.
Can we use a three-hundred-thousand-dollar house? Cause I already did the calculation.
Okay, okay, three-hundred, if your house is ass, if your house is assessed at three-hundred thousand.
If your house is assessed.
Maybe in three-twenty-five or something.
Yeah, well, we're just, uh, calculation I did was three-hundred thousand, so we're going with that one. So, if your house is assessed at three-hundred thousand dollars, this current year, you paid seventy-one-hundred and fifty-two dollars for taxes. Next year, on this budget, your taxes would be six, uh, I'm sorry, seven thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars. The difference being?
Four eighty-nine.
Four eighty-nine. Thank you very much, Mr. Webber. And then if you just do, you know, four eighty-nine divided by twelve, it's a forty-dollar a month increase.
That's based on the Town side of the budget.
No, that's based on everything.
The whole, the whole budget.
Everything.
Assume, well, how do we know what the Board of Finance, I mean, Board of Ed is asking?
So this is just?
We know, well.
The Board of Selectment's proposed budget.
This, yeah, this, this is basically the entire budget, cause we have to pass on to Finance the approved budgets, which include, uh.
Board of Ed.
Board of Ed, Debt Service, Capital, and the Town Operations. So those four numbers combined come up with that one point six-three, uh, mill increase. So, um, yeah, which, you know, uh, you know, that's, it, you know, here again, the value of a mill is two million, seven-hundred-ninety-seven, two, two-point-eight, two-point-eight million dollars, so, you know. We've, we've done a, I think we've made some, you know, difficult cuts, but considering what is the challenges ahead, uh, some necessary cuts to the, uh.
Extra eighty-one dollars a month.
To the budget, uh, but moving forward.
Nine-hundred and seventy-five a year.
Um, looking forward, uh, this is really difficult, because, you know, to some people, four-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars, you know, is something easily handled, but there are a lot of people in this town that that is a difficult number to swallow. Just talking to people up at Karen's share, uh, they've never had as many requests for assistance as they do now. Same thing with, uh, TVCCA, they're getting, we get requests on a very regular basis for assistance with, uh, electrical, you know, utilities, uh, water and sewer, cause now they've extended to that, so, um, going to the council of government meetings, you'll hear more and more money being given to communities, us included, to help meet with people who are having economic hardship. So, uh, we do, all of us, I think, understand that, you know, the tough situation this is, you know, placing on a lot of families, and we are very cognizant of that moving forward, so. And we will be passing this on to the Board of Finance, we'll begin their deliberations in a couple of weeks as well. Any other comments before we, uh, take the motion to, uh, to adopt the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four annual budget? Any other comments? And again, thank you all for your inputs, and Kevin, your first time through, uh, you have found a lot, I mean.
I lose a lot of hairs here. I had a whole head of hair when I started.
We know that's not true, but, um, you know, the, the time you've had to put in, especially in, in implementing a new payroll system at the same time as well, uh, closing out, you know, the audit from a, a long time ago. We appreciate the efforts, and, you know, I really didn't mind the emails at one-oh-eight in the morning or anything like that. Those weren't the good news. It was, if it was one-oh-eight, I know it wasn't good, so, but, um, and you've gone through this, and I know you've reached out to former colleagues and to bond councils to make sure you have covered everything possible moving forward, so, thank you. Ann, if you wanna, any other comments?
Well, um, just, I will need, um, the to, a total, that's.
I got it.
You got that total?
Yep.
Okay, and, uh, the net increase is eight point eight-six percent, right?
Yes.
Okay. I'll just take that, uh, yes, those numbers, eighty-seven, I'll just make sure I have that eighty.
So, we have approved our budget.
Well, we, we not, we haven't quite done that, but we're close. Yes.
But, we are passing on the Board of Ed budget without comment.
Well, we are.
So how's the motion to read?
Well, exactly, the same way, because normally, you know, we can, we can add to the end of that with, with comment on Board of Ed to be provided, because they'll be presenting to us on the thirteenth, um, and then we'll have plenty of time, cause they don't present to the Board of Finance until the twenty-eighth of the month. So we'll have plenty of time to review their books, then when we have the presentation, ask some questions, and then provide comment to the Board of Finance, so we have ample time. Last year, that was difficult, we didn't get the presentation until tonight, and then we provided questions to the Board of Finance for us, it was a difficult situation, so talking to the superintendent, we worked it out this way now, so.
Just to, just to, um, delve into that a little bit more, Roseanne, so did you have some language that you wanted to, that you were thinking we could, uh, change in the?
What do you have, what do you have so far?
So the, so the, um, the motion, uh, basic.
Why don't we make the motion?
We'll make the motion.
And then if someone wants to.
Yes, exactly, okay, so. Uh, move to approve the, the proposed twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four Town Budget in the amount of eighty-seven million, three-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars, for a net increase of eight point eight-six percent, consisting of the following, and to forward to the Board of Finance for approval. General Government, twenty-one million, six-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars. Debt Service, um, six million, one-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand, one, one-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars. Capital, six-hundred-and-ten thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty dollars. Board of Education, fifty-eight million, nine-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second, comment?
Yes.
I just think there needs to be a s, a statement that, uh, we, we're not forwarding the Board of Education budget with approval, because we haven't reviewed it.
Well, we never actually approve, we don't, we, 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 we forward it. It, it always says, you know, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. And we aren't able to make adjustments to the Board of Ed budget anyway, even if it had been presented, so it'd be the same number. If you'd like, we could add, you know, uh. Anything about, comments regarding that will be subsequent to the Board of Education's presentation to the Board of Selectmen if we'd like, but.
That would be fine.
Okay.
Yes, I, I, I agree with Roseanne, there should be something at the end of this.
Sure.
You know, something before we get into the numbers to, to indicate that we have yet to, uh, read, review here the presentation of the, of the Board of Education budget, so this is more pro forma that we're sending it off to Board of Finance to get them going to, in their reading, so.
Do you have a recommendation?
Uh, let's see, and to forward the approval, um.
You could just, how about note? You know, just the word note with a, something like, or something like that.
Oh, it could be parenthetically, okay.
Yeah.
Put a paren, so at the end of the, at the end of the, um, the phrasing here, just parenthetically, uh, note, um, let's see, let me be my wordsmith here, um.
Board of Selectmen comment on the Board of Education budget?
Board of Selectmen, um.
Has not reviewed.
How about comments and recommendations, cause that's what's in the charter, I believe.
Yeah.
Board of Selectmen comments and recommendations, uh, concerning.
Just, uh, Board of Selectmen, P U E.
Hold on, she, she.
Commentary.
Uh, budget.
To follow.
Will, uh, to follow, yes, so I have, um, okay, so. I'll read it again, I, I mean, it, so move to approve the proposed budget in the amount of X for a net increase of eight point eight-six, consisting of the following, and to forward to the Board of Finance for approval, parenthetically, note, uh, Board of Selectmen comments and recommendations concerning the Board of Education budget to follow. How does that, does that work?
I would just put review in there too, because.
Okay. Yes, I agree with you. Okay, so, uh, um.
As a board.
Board of, B, Board of Selectmen review, comma.
Yeah.
Comments, comma, and recommendations.
Yeah.
Thank you, concerning Board of Education budget to follow.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, everyone, good with, uh, is, Ann, are you good, since you did, are you good with the amendment? Who, and who seconded it?
I think I did.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, you, you okay with the amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we have, we have, we have, uh, all those in favor of the, uh, motion to adopt a twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four annual budget as amended? Signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions? Karen unanimously.
Thank you to Sandy for putting all this budget material together, along with Kevin's help.
And Karen Dipolina, she helped a couple days.
Carrie, Karen Galbo.
Karen Galbo helped as well.
Yeah, there was, it was a.
It was a team effort.
It's a team effort too, so.
It could be digital.
Okay.
Everything electronically.
I was gonna say.
If we have this little bundle that you gave us for this evening, and it doesn't have the three holes, is that something?
If you'd like to, you can take a field trip to my office on the way by, and I'll, I'll hole punch anything for you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so, yes. Our next item.
Okay, the next item is to approve the annual Lions Club lease to use the, uh, the field here behind us for their Fourth of July event. No, the Ju, usually the, the, uh, Fourth of July art show, so.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna make a motion here.
Okay.
And, uh, that we can discuss, okay. Move to approve and to authorize the First Selectmen to enter into a lease agreement with the Niantic Lions Club for the purposes of selling food in connection with the art show on July first and July second, twenty-twenty-three. The Town grants to the Lions for the period of four P M. on Friday, June thirtieth, at, and shall end on ten, at ten P M. on Sunday, July second, the right to use the land at the Town Hall on Pennsylvania Avenue, which is to be set aside for that purpose by the Town.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions? Karen unanimously. Okay, um, as much as I love ex officia reports, is there anybody that really feels the need to make one tonight?
No.
Okay, uh, we'll pass that on. Real quick with Selectmen's comments, um, uh, Route one sixty-one corridor, uh, uh, meeting yesterday, and what they just did is, right now the plan is, uh, they're gonna be taking more from the community, but they're gonna have that boardwalk going out over Gorton Pond, coming down, there'll be a sidewalk from Flanders Ford, basically all the way down to one fifty-six, and they have some ideas for, you know, putting traffic calming measures in, it's a really nice plan. They'll be coming out with a presentation to the community like they had in October, probably in April, and solicit input. Uh, I have, be attending a meeting on the ninth of March regarding the Exit one sixty-one, Exit seventy-four, uh, reconstruction plan uh, that's supposed to encompass four years, so I'll have much, a lot more report back at the next meeting on that. I've made sure that, uh, obviously Police Chief will be there, Public Works will be there, and I'm also making sure the Superintendent will be there too, uh, cause, you know, obviously it'll impact, uh, there were, the buses and so forth like that. And that's, uh, about it. One other thing too is, uh, we have a massive amount of old building plans in our offices down there,